So hello everybody, welcome back to another episode of Delta Rune! And today, uh, my little teacups, um... I wasn't gonna start the episode until after I got into the save file, but um... I got kind of like a weird visual when I opened up the game? And it kinda threw me off, so... We're just getting into it like this. Um, I assume we just gotta like, leave now, right? That's where we left off? It's been a little while. Wait, Chris, we're leaving? We just got here! Man, I don't wanna do our... go do our group project.
Oh, you two have homework?
Ugh, well...
Suzie, Chris, you have to do it right away! School's important! I banish you from this kingdom until you start your project!
Ugh, fine, I'll do it, jeez!
Suzie, don't worry, I'll go and help you too!
Uh, wait, Lancer, perhaps you shouldn't?
Do it! Kind boy friendship form!
Lancer was added to your key items.
What? Now where'd you go?
Don't worry, I sent you your inventory. I'm just being hanging out with Chris's pocket.
Don't know what that means, but okay.
There is not, I too shall assist.
Uh, we're good.
Ha ha, quite! We as a team are good!
Rolex became a key item even though no one wanted that! Alright, enough already, let's get going.
Good luck today, Chris, see you soon! Come back when you've finished your homework!
What's the point of having a room if you can't slack off in it? Well, damn, guess we gotta do our group projects.
Yeah, I know, how dare I, Suzie?
At least we got Lancer, right? Lancer, where are you? Damn, guess he skipped out after all, huh? So where should we do this? What? Library? Ugh, well, alright. I really do enjoy that we get like more of like gameplay outside? Yeah? Outside of the dark world? What is going on? What the hell? Undine, what did you do? Wh-what did you do? Damn, I was just erecting traffic as normal. When a little dog drove one of those toy cars into the middle of the street and started doing donuts! In the chaos, all the cars in town got jammed up. Thankfully, no one was hurt, but... Ordinary citizens like, "You gotta get outta here." I've got some heavy lifting to do! Traffic's moving at a snail's pace! I love snails, could today get any better? I heard a dog was doing donuts, so I sped over here. But a little donut is actually just the name of special attack for cars. Why is my life stuck in a loop of doughy disappointment? I dunno, man, maybe because you thought a dog was making donuts? Then again, this is Undertale, I-I don't know what I undertale, this is Delta Rune, I dunno what I expected. Alright, we're here. School, goddamn project. Books goddamn crazy about them. Hey, Chris, where the hell is everybody? Something seems kinda off. Screw it, let's just go play baseball in the computer lab. Huh, huh? It's like... The inside of the closet? Chris, you don't think this could be... Woo! Another dark world. Well, guess this means we can't start our project. Unless, you know, Chris? There's a dark fountain there, you can seal it. And I'll turn back into the computer lab, right? So what's it gonna be, Chris? Let's go, let's go, let's go! Yeah, let's just drop the act. Our last adventure was great, right? Oh, I love Suzie! I couldn't stop thinking about having another one. I dunno what's in there, but... We can't live if we don't find out, right? Come on, Chris. Aw, they look so cool! I'm gonna gush about it every time! This is new. Wait. Item, key item. Rolex sometimes in your pocket, how dad chromatic lesser. Oh my god, Lancer! Why, why does it just make that noise? Stop! You tried to call on the cellphone, oh, I forgot that it did that! Make it stop! It's nothing but garbage noise. Ooh, it's so pretty! Okay. Oh, I thought I could go and grab the... That seems oddly placed.
What are you? The wires, the wires!
Oh, okay. Ah! Ow! What? What? Oh my god, I forgot I could run!
Everyone was...
K-kay?
Everyone else has been... It's the same as she's going to! Somebody help me! Somebody please! Suzie? Chloe, you're here, just... Wait, can't help before it's too late!
Noel! Oh my god! The entrances for these... Okay.
Hell of a study session! Who the hell are you? I am known as serial number Q5U4EX7YY2E9N, what you foolish children may call me. Queen!
Oh my god! And a little text pop up. Like, "We're gonna call you Queen." Q5U37... uh... Queen! Well, look, Queen, we're not children.
Teens are merely big children, and adults are even bigger children.
Doesn't that make you a child too then?
Me? No, I'm... no, I am a computer!
Smart. Computer.
Well, thank you for this stimuli, but I must leave now. Goodbye.
Wait, wait, why'd you capture Noel?
I would have captured you too, but I ran out of cages.
Why the capturing?
So that she may become a willing peon in my quest for world domination. Also, maybe I will make her face into a robot one!
What? Why?
She seems... cool.
Well, forget it, dude. Nobody's turning anybody's face into a robot, you tell 'em!
Could that statement... could that be a statement of ominous distension?
Huh?
You wanna fight, loser?
Yes, yes already, yes, oh my god!
Oh, then bye!
Wait a goddamn second!
I have no time for such frivolous and would take your ass. Or perhaps, someone else could entertain you?
Ah, shoot.
Oh, enjoy your assimilation.
Wire wires swung in! I don't have Rousey! Not Rousey? No, it is Rousey, I almost called him Azrael. Don't have Rousey, Wyatt? Oh gosh. Wires work great, listen. Ow! Nugel bucket! Ah! Why did I say it like that? I'm having a time, guys. Okay, okay. Eh, ah, shoot. Ah! Ah! I-I am amazing, I-I am amazing! Oh, oh, okay, 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 I can do this?
Look at that, look at that, I did it! Preserved wire wire.
You won, got zero XP and 170 dollars. Seventy-six, phew, nice fighting, again after so long. Now, let's go catch up to the queen. Or not? Huh? They calm down.
I just used my pacify spell to put them into sleep mode.
Rousey, you're here!
I felt a dark presence and hurried over. Seems that a new dark fountain has appeared.
Rousey, they got Noel! Damn, what was she thinking messing in our dark world? If we don't do something, she might be...
Where are you not, Suzie? All we have to do is seal the fountain.
Yeah, yeah. Can't be mad about another adventure, right? Come on, Chris. Oh my god, they're so cute! Oh, I love them, I love them, I love them! Let's go! Amazing! I haven't... Oh my god, this place is gorgeous! The music, mmm! A green field extends before you and, in the distance, shitty sight, a city shines brightly. You are filled with the power of a new adventure! Cyberworld! Yeah! Wah! No, I wanna explore! Oh. Magic! Pacify! What's up, fam? Oh, you know what I could've done, why didn't I think about that? Oh well. Center's a glorious, glorious was added to your armor, what does that do? A tough bracelet made of green wires is studded with sharp glowing lights, shoot! I wanna, I wanna go on the teacups! Oh my god, we actually get to go on the teacups! Actually get to go on the teacups! Oh my god, it's our, it's our new friend! Ow, ow! Aw, I'm so bad at this! I can just hold it down? I didn't know that, oh my god! I love this! I love this, this is, this is so fun! Oh my god, what's this? Oh, Chris, it's a free Apple Cypredia! I'll add an entry, editable, oh my god, apple editable! Also, it wrote an article about losing recruits. Read it? From now on, defeating enemies with violence will make them lost. Lost enemies can become... cannot become recruits ever again. But bonds you break may make you stronger. Yet, no, sorry. Lighteners, I haven't seen many of you recently. If you didn't know, an evil ruler is taking over the world! I don't really like politics, so I have no opinion on this. Is queen... oh! Ha! Is, is queen a... Lancer's mom. Recently, something called internet is having an outage. Some say it was the secret queen's know-how. Since then, it seems like she's become quite extreme. The task has crossed your path. Act. Cutting? Then, begin! Aw, we liked it! Aw, look at, look at the baby! See, I'm excellent at this game, is this the right way? Oh, it is.
Noel, honey! Become my willing peon and I will bring you! All you have to do is hit yes on the peon release form.
Hi, I'm scared.
Oh, have you never signed a form before? No, it's everything else that's scary. Please support your sadness protocol. I told you being a peon will be cool!
Noel!
Suzie, Chris?
Don't worry, we won't let your face get robot- robotized.
That's something they're gonna do?
Whoops, sorry, you knew that.
Oh dear, that was supposed to be a surprise. Oh well.
Wa-wait!
It is quite troubling. A peon must be willing to assist me in world domination. Only she had fellow peons to encourage her.
So... So like, you guys? Hey, are you like... Doing anything right now?
We aren't going to help you! Understood, mind-changing protocol necessitated!
A giant arcade game?
I shall humiliate you at a simple children's dipotion. With your self-esteem eradicated. There will be no choice but to serve me.
The hell, I've never played this one before.
But Chris is quite good at games, aren't they?
Oh yeah, Chris, I forgot you were a nerd, sure! Mom! We got this, Chris, we're good, we're the good guys, right? All we have to do is figure out some way to cheat.
Chris, I bet you're very good at games, aren't you? Can't make a smile, I... Wow, Chris, your passion is amazing, that was the most monitored response I've heard in my life.
Oh, Chris, congratulations on losing horribly. I advanced my internal clock when I've already won! Also, happy birthday Suzie, happy birthday!
It's not my birthday. He tried to use the arcade machine. You weren't tall or strong enough to use the controls.
Self-esteem eradication complete! Running laughing protocol!
Um, it's okay, Chris, er, I'm short too. Chris, wait, I have an idea. Chris, if we combine our powers, then... Look, I'll show you what I've been practicing! Magical stool form A!
Now we're talking, alright, leave it to me. Put your arms out. Power beast form S, oh my god, what is this? Move your arms, I'll move with ya, let's go!
Incredible! Your chance for motion is combining all your weak points! Self-esteem crushing, efficiency 300, and rising. Commence virtual combat.
We just... oh, poor Rousey.
Press X or Z if you dare.
We're just gonna pretend that that never happened, right? Cause I was totally winning, nah! Hacking? Hacking? I pr-... I keep pressing the wrong button. I did it! Eh, that you could beat us.
Regal laughter, ha ha ha! Oh my, that was actually quite amusing! You lifeforms have exceeded my expectations! I will offer you a new exceedingly belevin- belevolent compromise. Assimilate into my cyber army! And there is only a 50% chance I will reprogram your face. Please select your choice, perish in the chill of absolute destruction, or flourish under the warm blossom of my hellish reign.
The hell did you just say? The hell did you say that so ecstatically? Perish!
Uh, Queen, aren't there any other options?
Perish. Yes, you could also mega perish.
Yeah, uh, no, perishing bites.
You could say it, mega bite, ha ha ha!
Wow, could you get out of here already?
Understood, performance setting...
Uh, preference setting, set to punch. Come on, let's go after her. Uh, I'm gonna heal? The game is wrecked, you are filled with the power of petty violence. Hell yeah! And you thought I wouldn't get to beat anybody up?
Chris, I think you should handle the puzzle.
Figured it out. Apple! O-okay, oh... Guys, are you not gonna follow me? Guys? Fiber scarf, fiber scarf was added to your weapon. Aw, what the... Um, hello? Looks like you got past Newbert's force field. Newbert does not know that force field got there. What is Newbert's force field? And the prize have Newbert's treasure. Newbert doesn't know what's inside, but Newbert will give it to you! That is Newbert's treasure, remember, you're just borrowing it, forever. Thank you, Newbert. Thank Newbert for his generosity. How about that? God, the music in this game is always just fantastic, oh, who are you? I can tell, I can tell you how many of these I've cleaned up. It's not so bad, I like cleaning.
I wanna go back to the city, that way is blocked. I'm no country boy, pull me out of the sun field! Ah, there's a rebel team res- resisting the queen. So far, I found out, all I found are overpriced bagels.
Got it, on about 400 bagels, only 80 dollars? God! You were crushed with the weight of war! Not really, you just can't carry that money. Did I still lose 80 dollars? Can I have one too? You're selling them. Yo, hard work making Queen's minion, ain't it? Why don't you take a break and grab a snack? Ultra seedy seedy bagels, only 400 each. Pleasure doing business with you. It's a lone door frame! Damn, I tried. Damn, I tried. Yo, what's your name? I'm the hacker. I'm going after the blue check smog. Find three inside of the other head, he'll join you in the city. You scully, you look like just the kind of folks to have a cool city. Well, we got our first side quest. One, two, three, ooh, what's down here? Oh, hi kitty cat. Act. Pet. Bear. Look at that kitty cat. Whoa, 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 whoa. Actually, I wanted to... I wanted to check it, see what it said. This stray cat is in need of some management. Meow, 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 meow. I don't wanna manage it, I just wanna give you lots of pets. Look at that baby. I'm a cat person, if y'all couldn't tell. Oh, we got a second closed wrist. Okay, let's uh, let's toss that back on to... Suzie, let's give her two of those.
It seems to be stuck. No, with a cute little baby.
Ow, I went too fast.
Vero vocion floated in.
Awww! Everyone treated the ender with tender love and care, all the enemies full. Look how cute they are and their cute little... I'm, I'm taking a photo of this so I can draw them later. Oh my god. Boop! Aw, that's so cute. How has nobody made fan art of this yet? Maybe they have, maybe I just haven't seen it. Oh, ow! Oh, ow, ow! Man. Man. Look at how cute they are. Wait, is this another puzzle? You do it. The hell is that? A driver's license number? Can you use it and drive your mom's car?
Chris, let's stand here and you can spell freely.
Chris, spell a swear.
Um, I don't think they can with these letters.
Oh. Wait, you check?
Chris, do your best. You typed agree to all. Thank you for agreeing to this peon release one. Now you are legally my minions and I can use your li- likeness for funny tattoos.
What if you just don't do what you say?
In that case, I would be forced to use another guy, probably.
Uh, better start a mom on that.
Okay, but I'm still going to use your likeness.
Where are these clickers? Gimme, 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 gimme. Watch me die, cause I'm a failure. We won, woo! Heh, good luck figuring out which ride to take. This ride. This right ride is the right one. To this one. So what if we take this one? Am I not... Am I not supposed to... Oh, am I supposed to collect 16 of them? Oh, I am, okay. You're, you guys need to watch me just fail at this for a while. Cause I am really bad at these types of puzzles. Oh, was that, was that one of the clickers? Okay. What about this one? Heh, it would be funny if the puzzle liked. It was actually more similar to letters you actually needed. I'd like to see Berthly try and solve that. Is this? It's better not.
Um, perhaps this isn't a real word, Chris?
Yeah, it is. It's IC's catchphrase.
Huh? What's it meaning then?
Uh, I don't know. He just rolls his eyes, um, rolls his mouth and says it. Or maybe that's just the mustache you got at the store. Whoa! Loved that. Was that? Was that the stupid face? That was on the crossword puzzle? In fucking undertale? Is that the gibberish letters? Please, somebody, somebody tell me that's the gibberish letters. Hold on, I'm gonna look up the crossword puzzle. Crossword puzzle. Oh wait, it was a word search. Word serrch? Under? Tail? Oh, it is! It is the random letters. Dude, that's amazing. I love you Toby Fox. Man, that was so much easier than the other ones. No, I, I lied. Don't make me do it again. It's a dead end. Alright, what's the deal twerp? Who's a twerp? The name Sweet. Oh, like sweet or like sweets? Don't tell me you haven't heard of the sweet Cap'n Cakes. Um, doesn't ring a bell. Guess I act still a bit on the ground. I'm so sorry. Sweet Cap'n Cakes, not only we the cyberfield's best musical trio. We also latest resistance against the big bad queen and all her crew. And that starts with resisting you. What, we're fighting the queen too? Nah, Cap'n saw you help her kidnap some girl. Hey, hey, Cap. We won't let anyone lay a finger on Mad Mosels. Except us. That's not the point, Cap'n. Black half the point, 60%, 55%, we're rebels, not players. We're rebels that play. We don't play, we don't play. That's it, KK, get over here. KK, I'm with players. I'm a CD player. Me too. Wait. They're getting away. Sweet chill. Sweet chill. Don't be all the bad guys. Nah, this is our chance. Are you ready? Let's fight. KK, yeah? Play some metal music. Okay. Ew, this hurts. Perhaps if we keep them all to damn, we can win. I just realized I forgot to be a battle log.
Stinks, stinks, have a fun. They can dance with the bad guys, but I'm dancing, so dance with me. Um, Chris, maybe if you keep dancing?
Oh my god, he does an Irish jig and Suzie, I can't. Is this really working?
Maybe for some... Maybe if you try ball dancing?
Hey, what the hell do we need Chris to act?
Because that's um, Chris' unique talent, so...
You think I'm too stupid to dance by myself?
Do you learn as action she can get from her magic menu? Suzie, I don't think you should.
Happy feet, dumbass. Suzie made Rollsa a little bit arrogant even though he didn't want to.
Sorry, Chris.
Nah. He danced with Su- Sweet. Suzie danced with KK, Rollsa danced with Cap'n. Everyone is dancing. I ca- this is so dumb, I love it. This is a battle won, thank you. Field B, watch my moves, stinks, stinks. Hey losers, wrap it up, battle's over. Over, and in other type words, we lost! Does that mean we can be friends? KK, no! But it's not really my style anyway. Yeah, because you're coward. I mean, it was fun dancing, but Sweet, don't worry. I think our dance would beat them.
Beat them?
Yeah. All mercy-like. See, when we dance with them, it convinced them that we're cool. Now they're on our side? Yeah. Hey, you three, walk into the good side, we are the good side, just go with it Suzie. Let's rendezvous at our junk shop. We jam the door shut, but we'll kick it open. Alright everybody, let's go. So... I wonder how Lancer's doing? Sounded... Sounded like meltout there, slay. Why you three opposing without me? Pretty. We did it guys! We did it! Can I have a s- can I, can I have a safe point? Bah! You found three checkmarks, you leave. I will now leave the city. Maybe a cyberpass will slip across on small in Queen's mansion. In the meantime, make sure you power the blue checkmarks. I was expecting something else. Oh my god, a safe point, thank god. Okay, and on that note, my little teacups after that wonderful dance battle right there. Um, I think we're gonna end it off here for today's episode. I had a lot of fun. I hope you did too. I'm sorry Suzie, I can't take you seriously with your sprite like that. Oh... I do find it interesting that Chris is the only sprite that hasn't changed. I feel like that says something that everybody else has had character development and he hasn't. But hey, you know, just uh, me going on one of my little theory rants. Anyway, I'll see you all in the next video!